No, that's. You know my whole mind.
Well, we're gonna do it. I had it. Um, it should be recorded. Yeah, it's recorded.
Okay. You guys have.
Just a minute.
I was parent. At work.
Mitch and I sat and talked about that two weeks ago. There's gonna be a small flag in it. It could roll up.
I know.
Thought they could roll up a crashing flag or something. Cause there would have only been forty-four started.
All the stuff we were sweating.
Maybe not.
Maybe not do that.
Maybe don't do that. That might be distracting. Yeah.
Can somebody care?
Yeah, I just want my man now there. I don't know.
Aren't you gonna be the press today, Pam?
Huh?
Sit at the press table?
I don't know about that. Maybe.
Oh, Dave's here?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's probably somebody like him down there. Is he my speaker in the damn paper?
See a picture of the pic?
No, my speaker under that one meeting.
Yes, yes.
This is from my photo. That was poor. I don't know what worse that signature they ran for the fact that they tell everybody the world I live around school.
Do it. Do you mind if I? I found.
How am I doing?
That I wanted.
How am I doing?
RCS board email was.
Uh huh.
What would you call this?
Oh, it's a set.
Oh, thank you.
Um, maybe, um, they could share with your family, can share with.
Hey, thank you very much.
Uh huh.
Hey, how you doing? Yeah, it can't be.
Hi, thanks, Beeline.
You guys all ready?
Hi, how are you?
Is everybody able to be logged in yet?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Sign up to see. And still over there.
Yeah, you know, I'm trying to be out of sight.
I know, maybe you're good. Look at this.
I'm trying to be invisible.
You're on. Well, they're not all logged in yet. Here, let me know when you're ready. Please. Ms. Swett, you wanted to speak just to the tax hearing.
I'm just gonna do one and I figured I'd just say it now so I can make it be on.
I know, I thought I had one to say too.
My daughter sent me a. Thought we were in there.
For a G D.
Thanks, I'll let me start this.
And this is being recorded?
It's on right now.
Oh, you're on. Oh, man. Oh, Lord.
Okay, is everybody ready? I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight for December's regularly scheduled, uh, meeting. If we can do the honors and stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Don Brotherton?
Here.
Mota Johnson?
Here.
Nikki Pettit?
Here.
Mitch Wilson?
Here.
Joe Robinson? Tyler Wilson?
Here.
Andy Graham?
Here. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're here for our, uh, truth and taxation hearing first. So, we need to approve this agenda. Am I correct, Scott?
Correct.
So we need to approve this agenda. So can I get a motion to approve the truth and taxation agenda first?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Brotherton made the motion. Could I have a second, please?
I see.
Just better with a second.
Don Brotherton?
Aye.
Mota Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Andy Graham?
Aye. Okay, public comment during the tax hearing, uh, Mrs. Swett?
Good evening, everyone. As I said before, I'm just going to cover everything I wanted to say this evening instead of signing up for two different. Okay, thank you. I want to address the proposed tax levy by Rancho City Schools 137. I strongly feel the board should table the proposed tax levy and return to the drawing board and come to the citizens of this community with a reasonable levy. As a citizen of Ran Toole and like most, I don't mind paying my fair share of property taxes which benefits our village and schools. However, when we have not seen progress with our schools and state standing, anything above funding for basic operating expenses, staff cost of living increase, basic benefits, basic transportation expenses, et cetera, is not warranted. Salary increases above and beyond is rewarding poor performance of our schools. Hiring additional administration is not warranted either. Our schools have declined since the closing of Shunud Air Force Base and have flatlined at the bottom of the state for the last ten plus years. Funds from property taxes, state and federal government, as well as grant funding based on the socioeconomic status of our community, is being poured into our schools. What does it appear, why does it appear the majority of the property taxes are going towards salaries? Mostly contract employees living outside of corporate limits. With the cost per student now averaging thirteen thousand a year, we are still failing to meet the mark and failing our youth. Our comparable district, other comparable districts are ranked higher with less funding. Last year, RCS claimed to have lost out on seven hundred thousand dollars and blamed everyone from the county clerk's office and the village for the error that was made with the tax levy. Now it appears you are trying to recoup the cost of your own error by putting the burden on the taxpayers. Per my FOIA, this is money you never had and was never entitled to because of what was levy. Again, this should be tabled and a responsible increase to cover only necessary operating and salary increases should be brought back before the public and approved. With the above said, the plan to redistrict RCS at this time without a complete independent review of the systemic issues and failures already implemented appears to be a distraction and lacks full disclosure and transparency. Spending per student has increased. Additional staff and specialized staff and administrators have been hired. Promotions given, et cetera, have occurred over the last ten years under the previous superintendent. Educational and discipline trends tried and for the most part have not been as successful as hoped. Stop playing games with our children and the community. Table redistricting and convene an independent committee to review and audit the current system and make recommendations which are sustainable and will achieve benchmarks as successes we desire for our students and want to see in our community. Over the last twelve to fourteen years, our children have been treated like a pea in a shell game. Moved from neighborhood schools to grade centers then back. Then children selectively being moved out of their neighborhood schools to other schools to address the lack of diversity and equity and other issues. East Lawn was used as a crutch claiming overcrowding as one reason for redistricting. However, Pleasant Acres has consistently been the most populous school in this district. It currently has almost four hundred students. The other schools are within thirty of East Lawn. Again, I implore the board to table both issues and come back to the citizens with a reasonable proposal or vote no. All I hear is it is for the children. The proposed path and current impact on our children and community is unacceptable. Then do better than what you have for our children. You have adequate resources. It just needs to be better implemented and allocated. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, at this time that concludes our truth and taxation hearing. Could I have a motion to adjourn? During this?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Tyler Wilson made the motion. Can I have a second?
Okay.
One second, okay.
Don Brotherton?
Aye.
Mota Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Andy Graham?
Aye.
And can I ask a question real fast? I should have gotten before that. Um, my comments got taken before the vote. That would seem to be a better way to do it in case any of the board members were on the bubble about which way to vote.
Uh, I'll address that when we get down to the.
Alright. Thank you.
Yeah. So, okay, uh, I'd like to call the regular scheduled board meeting, uh, to order. Can I get a motion?
Nice to move.
Okay, here we have a second.
One second.
Mr. Peddle with the motion. Mr. Mitch Wilson with a second.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Mota Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Andy Graham?
Aye. Okay, item number six. We need to approve tonight's agenda. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to review it. If there's any additions or corrections or modifications that needed, this is the time. If not, can we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Mr. Tyler Wilson? Can I get a second? Mr. Mitch Wilson, second.
Andy Graham?
Aye.
Mota Johnson?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Don Brotherton?
Aye.
Please see if it makes sense. I was making sure Johnny's talking. Okay, uh, so this is the public speaking part and I'll, I'll say a couple of things to Mr. Chairman. So I'll answer your question right now and that is like every governmental body that I've ever been to, public has a chance to make comment sometimes before the meeting, sometimes after meeting, sometimes both. It is good practice that the board not interact, um, with those public comments. This is our, this is our business meeting, but we have always, since I've been on this board and since I've been on board meetings, I've always given the chance for the public to speak before any items are, are voted on. So we had taxation, truth taxation hearing. This is Swett spoke. Now we're at a public meeting and, uh, we have Mrs. Prager, uh, ready to, ready to come in.
Um, I brought up some issues the last couple of times I was here and, um, you told me that you would respond to me and my questions. I waited about two weeks and checked my phone every day and never seen a call from you. Um, I was just wondering what's the timeline on answering my questions?
So, so I did call you back and I did not, you never answered. I left, I left one voicemail for you.
Okay, I never got that.
Oh.
Alright.
Okay.
And if you could call me back, I'd like to have my, uh, questions answered about superintendent's pay and, um, contracts and things like that.
Okay.
Still interested in that.
If you could be so kind to give me your phone number, I'll call you back and give you your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I tried to, like, one way or another.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, item number eight, uh, tonight is a consent agenda item. All items under consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion and sub role call vote. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a board member so requests in which in the event that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a first item approved after the consent agenda. Does anybody wanna read it or is it me? Alright, I make the motion to approve the consent agenda items including personnel report as submitted with the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements of, from new hires as indicated in Illinois statutes and RCS board policy and procedures, including application of bills prepaid by the finance manager under board policy four dash fifty. Can I have a second?
A second.
Just pedal with a second.
Don Brotherton?
Aye.
Mota Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Andy Graham?
Aye.
Item number ten will be the tax levy. Do you want to? Take this? Okay.
Um, I'm gonna read a statement on behalf of the board regarding the tax levy. Um, and this will be available after the meeting on our website. During the November twenty twenty-one meeting, the superintendent and chief school business official presented a tentative tax levy. The recommended tax levy this year is significantly higher than a typical year because RCS anticipates being able to include TIF one in our tax extension. For an individual taxpayer, if TIF one is able to be included in the tax extension, we estimate a one-year nine point seven percent increase in the RCS portion of the tax bill. However, this is still an estimated five point nine percent lower than the twenty eighteen RCS portion of the tax bill. RCS would like to thank the Village of Ran Toole and the Champagne County Clerk for working with us to resolve the challenges around the ending of TIF one. At the November board meeting, the superintendent shared the most accurate information he had at the time. Since that presentation, the superintendent wishes to clarify that the Village of Ran Toole was not required to hold an annual joint review board with RCS for TIF one because TIF one was established under a unique nineteen ninety-five law. Additionally, although RCS did not directly collect property taxes from TIF one, RCS did receive flow-through funds through the Village of Ran Toole. According to the Village of Ran Toole, RCS received three point three million dollars in dispersments from two thousand four to two thousand twenty. Ran Toole City Schools exists to build a stronger community by educating our students. To that end, the Board of Education for RCS is committed to improving our schools and reducing the property tax burden within our community. The Village of Ran Toole is making significant strides to improve our community, which can be seen in the ongoing economic development projects and the overall feeling of optimism. We recognize that improving our schools and reducing the property tax burden serves to aid in Ran Toole's future growth. Over the past several years, the overall tax rate for the RCS portion has been trending downward. The Board of Education intends to continue to work to reduce property taxes while maintaining the overall financial health of RCS. To do this, if the TIF funds are available to be recaptured, RCS plans to refund a portion of the increase in taxes over the next two years to homeowners by rebating up to fifty percent of the TIF unrelated increase in twenty twenty-two and twenty-five percent in twenty twenty-three and pursue a tax abatement grant from the state of Illinois. If we are awarded this grant in full, we may be able to reduce the property tax rate substantially and permanently.
Thanks, Scott. We have a motion for the tax levy.
We have to put the number in.
Okay.
I forgot to write the number.
Okay.
It's what is on the.
Nine point seven, isn't it?
Nope. It's the, um.
Do you mean the extension?
Yeah.
The number, it's, uh, six million?
No, 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 no. Motion to approve the tax levy resolution with a tax levy of, and we need to put the percentage in.
Prove.
It's now fourteen.
Yeah.
Whatever was published in the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can pull it up if I need.
It's, uh, fourteen point seven four three six five percent.
Okay.
Six, hold on. Fourteen seven five six three five?
I'm sorry, fourteen point seven five three six five percent.
Wanna make the motion then? Mr. Peddle?
Make the motion.
I don't want to sing.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion to approve, oh, I can't make the motion. Somebody else make the motion, please.
Make the motion to approve.
The tax levy.
The tax levy, with a tax levy of eight, six, seven, five, ten, fourteen.
Hannah, could you read the?
Fourteen point seven four three six five percent.
Okay.
And prove the filing of the tax levy.
Do we have a second, please?
Also, Mr. Tyler Wilson with a second.
Don Brotherton?
Aye.
Mota Johnson?
Nay.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Andy Graham?
I need to abstain.
One.
Alright.
One.
I need to abstain because of some conflict.
Motion. Taxes. Motion carries.
Yeah, alright.
Item number eleven. Elementary school reorganization recommendation, Mr. Wood.
Alright. Um, that's okay. In the packet for the board, and this was public prior to the meeting, in the packet online, is my recommendation at this time for elementary reorganization. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and read it. I appreciate the feedback from our community staff and board members in the past months as we have considered options for addressing challenges in our district. RCS needs to make bold changes in order to affect significant improvements in our student outcomes. I do believe that the proposal to reorganize our elementary schools into true grade level centers better positions our district to improve the outcomes of our students. But it is clear to me that moving to grade level centers at this time is not a popular option for our community and staff. The overall resistance to any significant changes to our elementary school organization greatly increases the probability that those changes would not be as effective as possible. At this time, I do not recommend significant changes to our elementary school organization. However, I do recommend administration and the board continue to explore the possibility of grade level centers in the future. Given the challenges of the past two E school years, the uncertainty of a possible preschool for all programming mandate from the federal government, probable increase in federal funding related to school construction, and overall resistance to making significant changes, I recommend the following changes for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, one, and these are up there, and reevaluate all students who are currently petitioners and shift those students to their neighborhood schools when it can alleviate class size concerns. Shift a portion of the bilingual program population from East Lawn to Pleasant Acres. At this time, it most feasible, it is most feasible to shift to Pleasant Acres from East Lawn, bilingual students whose neighborhood school is Broad Meadow but currently attend East Lawn. Establish and enforce a policy limiting enrollments into classrooms that are above the district average for a particular grade level. For example, if the district's average class size for third grade is twenty and the third grade classrooms in a school are already at twenty, a student enrolling late or after the start of the school year may not be able to enroll in a neighborhood school and be required to attend a school where the class size is less than twenty. The district would continue to be responsible for transportation, consistent with existing policy and practice, and the student would be able to enroll in the neighborhood school for the next year or petition to remain in the assigned school. And four, provide additional support staff to schools based on enrollment. For example, East Lawn will continue to have a higher average enrollment compared to the other three schools. The district should allocate targeted staffing to offset the higher enrollment. Um, there is no board action required at this time to move forward with the above changes. Item number three may require board action depending on whether the recommended action requires board approval. So that's me saying I have to investigate how that policy would be, uh, spelled out and whether that will require official board action. The way the board policy, uh, boundaries exist right now, it's just that I have to inform the board. Um, but I do think I need to have something more spelled out, uh, also for accountability with our community. I will consult with our attorney on item number three. Item number four would require board action if we recommend any additional staffing requests beyond our typical staffing allocations, such as adding a full-time administrator. So it's typical for us if we're creating a position, um, or adding a unique position to a building, uh, that, that is approved by the board in advance. That's different from if we need another fifth grade teacher, we don't bring those to the board for approval because that's based on, strictly on class sizes and enrollment. So that is the recommendation at this time.
Okay. I'll, I'll just say something real quick if, if, does anybody else wanna have anything to say on this? Okay, I'll say. Uh, I'd like to thank you and the staff for all the hard work you did and the community events. I'd like to thank the teachers, union and staff because I know you guys were fully involved in that. But I could not agree more with what Scott said in this opening paragraph is bold changes are needed and those might not be popular with some parents or some staff at some point in time. I look forward to you investigating more options and, uh, what we, we can do to make a better learning environment for our kids. So, uh, I don't think this is done forever and I, I think there still needs to be something done, but I'm not saying what is best and what's not best, but, um, thank you for all the work you, you intercepted.
I have a new comment. I, I applaud Doctor Woods for what he has done because, uh, as he said in the first paragraph, he feels that there needs to be a thing. And that, that is certainly a, a board situation that would need to be taken care of, maybe. But I really appreciate that he did listen and, uh, importantly, I heard that we did not, that the people did not want to see major changes. And I did not want to see major changes. I mentioned that the report meeting ago. That I, I won't want to give out disruption and I think this will be welcomed by the majority of people. At least the ones I talked to and I tried to get across section. So I, I really appreciate that he did listen and I, I think this is example of, you know, we do try to listen. Do we always do anything right? No. But I do think we try to listen and, and take the input from the community and the staff and the faculty, everybody. So, thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. Okay. Item. Anything else? Item number twelve.
Okay, well, this is item, gonna be item, we, we have to do separately. This was on the agenda last month and I had it worded wrong, so we had to pull it off and now it's on this month. But we have three, um, property tax abatement resolutions and this is simply a procedural thing that we have to file with the county clerk every year. Our outstanding bonds, which is like our mortgage, okay? Our outstanding bonds are entirely paid for by one percent sales tax. So what we're doing on these three resolutions that we have to do separately is, uh, pass that we are basically telling the county clerk, don't collect property taxes to pay for the bonds. Okay, that's all it means. Uh, I'm probably oversimplifying it too much, but, um, that is what we're doing here. And when we do the resolution, the board members to say is, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution abating the tax here to four levy. And you have to read the whole thing. And we have to do each one separate. Okay. I really did ask if we could get it all at once.
Yeah. If anybody wanna make the first motion. You gotta read the whole thing in the subject line if you're making it.
Andy, I think you're gonna get all three.
Yeah, okay.
Alright.
I make a motion that we pass a resolution abating the tax here to for levied for the year twenty twenty-one to pay debt service on taxable general obligation bonds series two zero one zero B of the district. Can I have a second?
Oh, sir. Everybody wants a second.
Tyler Wilson with the second.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Mota Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Andy Graham?
Aye. Item number three, uh, thirteen, I'll make a motion and we pass a resolution abating the tax here to for levy for the year twenty twenty-nine to be paid debt service of taxable general obligation school bonds, series twenty sixteen of the district. Can I have a second?
Second.
Just pedal with a second.
John Brotherton?
Aye.
Mota Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Andy Graham?
Aye. Okay.
I make the motion to.
Pass a resolution. Pass a resolution.
Pass a resolution abating the tax here to four levy for the year twenty twenty-one to pay debt service on general obligation replenishing school bonds, series twenty twenty of the district.
And I'll second it.
Perfect. All right, John Bretherton?
Aye.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Andy Graham?
Aye. Okay, item number fifteen, school calendars.
All right. Oh, gosh, when did we meet? The association and district administration met to review calendars. I'm always optimistic and want to approve two in a row, knowing that I don't think I've ever been in a district where we haven't had to revise the second year, so we're looking to approve two, two calendar years for the school year calendar, and these are also posted in the packet in advance. Just the notes on this is twenty-two, twenty-three, election day, November eighth, is still a school holiday, and that is set to expire, so it would be the last time as a holiday unless it's renewed by the state. As a result, we removed Monday after Easter as a holiday, and I put holiday in quotes because Easter Friday and Easter Monday are not federal holidays, but they're traditionally days off in a lot of communities in this part of the world. Twenty-three, twenty-four, Easter Friday and Monday are off. Juneteenth is now a federal holiday. That does not affect our school calendar. It is a work holiday, though, for our employees who are twelve months. That's spelled out in the law. And probably the most noticeable change that teachers are probably the group that will notice it is we always have started the school, not always, but for the last several years, we've started the school year with two teacher institute days, and we come back from winter break and have one institute day. We're gonna come, start trying two institute days at the end of winter break as a way for us to do a lot of professional development all together with our staff, just like we do at the start of the year. So those were the big changes, but either way, it always adds up to one eighty-five. There's a hundred and eighty, the breakdown's in the calendar, so students are in attendance a hundred and seventy-six days, four days are teacher institute days, I believe, and I'm probably wrong, but and five emergency days that we hopefully don't use. So, all right.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the calendar? If not, can we have a motion to approve the next two-year school calendar? Mr. Mitchell also with the motion. Can we have a second?
My second.
Moto Johnson with a second.
John Bretherton?
Aye.
Moto Johnson?
Aye.
Nikki Pettit?
Aye.
Mitch Wilson?
Aye.
Tyler Wilson?
Aye.
Andy Graham?
Aye.
And as I said, please don't be too shocked when we have the calendar back in front of us to fix it, because that seems to be the pattern. The state creates new holidays and there was this whole COVID thing one year, so. All right. We have some presenters. If you guys, if you have chairs, you want to grab chairs for my.
Yeah, I'll grab.
I'll introduce our presenters instead of coming up. Oh, wait till you're up there. And I think I have to click. I'm getting ready to go.
I'm gonna try to go over. Okay.
First of all, Mr. Henderson, I told you since you're already, already two minutes.
All right. I'm sorry, it's six.
Yeah. Okay, just to kind of introduce ourselves, my name is Patricia Lovett, and I'm the bilingual director, and I'm one of the chairs on the social equity working group I started last year, and I get the awesome privilege to continue with this amazing team.
Deandre Henderson, assistant principal at JW later. It's my first year in Rantoul City School District, and this is my, I'm also a co-facilitator with these two amazing ladies.
Hi, Levat Harmon, assistant principal at Pleasant Acres, and this is my first year in the lovely Rantoul School District, and thank you for us.
The way you say that, Mrs. Helling, you don't have other experience. You spent more than education a long time, both, all three of them.
Oh, we did, that's the last time, right?
Yeah, you. Okay.
So to kind of start off, I want to thank everybody in the board. It's been really awesome to see you at the meetings and participating in the subcommittees, connecting with you and using your facilities as principals are interacting with the community and launching out to do more. Love, have love that we're starting to interact more as a district. Just an update, we started our first formal meeting this year in September, then we've been meeting at subcommittees because we really want to work on voice, and we want to have the community and the staff and the diverse, diverse population, diverse people we have in the community have a conversation with us and to be able to make decisions and talk about how we can integrate what's happening in the community with what's going on in the district. That's why we went smaller. Then our second formal meeting is another big meeting where we talk about what we've been working on in our subgroups, and then we have another one coming up January fourth, please.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Please, please feel free to come. It's, everyone's invited. We're really interested in getting feedback and making the changes needed in the district. Thank you. These are our contributors for this year.
Are you gonna read all their names?
No.
Nope, okay. One thing I would say, Nikki is our board member who's been attending since last year, and what I would say is, we definitely still would like more community members and more family, super parents, to be involved in this, because it is pretty heavily dominated by.
I have no excuse.
By our staff. So that's not a problem, but we do definitely, I know, we had, I think, some more community members last year because we are one hundred percent Zoom, so people weren't able to come in a little more easily on that, so.
And we do offer our meetings, our subcommittees through Zoom, so kind of go back and forth in person in Zoom or a hybrid. And then just there's this kind of, what is our vision, what is our purpose? This is something we're always thinking about as we're working together on the goals. Primarily, that goal, the social equity working group in Rantoul today's goals will present actionable solutions to the Board of Education to create a culture within the district and community that promotes and values all students' equity, specifically students who have been historically under served. And so just working together to create actionable items is really important, that we're not just running our mouth, right? And so these are the five different sub.
Excuse me one moment.
Yes.
Can you guys please stop talking in the back? It's hard for me to hear what she's saying. Thank you.
And these are the five subcommittees and five groups that we're working on, and we're going to kind of explain the updates since you've given us the charge to work on specific goals that we ended last year with, and, and we want to update on these different subcommittees what we've been doing. So, next. All right, so I kind of co-facilitate or the academic achievement group, so we have met quite a few times, and in our meetings, we have branched with the literacy academic subcommittee of the district, and one thing that we're going to be looking at is the reading resources that are available in the, the district to make sure that they identify the essential components of reading instruction, which is up there, phonological awareness, phonics vocabulary, spelling fluency, and reading comprehension. And then we want to make sure that those curriculums are culturally responsive, and so we will use a tool to rate the cultural relevancy of those curriculums and just to make sure that it goes deeper than our people of color depicted in the pictures. So we want to make sure that it hits a little bit more cultural relevancy for our students. We want to look at growth gains on fast bridge by race and determine the equivalency of the gains by race. So we want to look at what each group is doing, how they're growing, but we also want to look at the rate of growth to make sure that the curriculums or the programs are not just increasing growth for one area of students, but that our students are all growing at the same rate in addition.
And fast bridge is our district assessment tool that we use, and each school is using it, so that's why we chose fast bridge as the instrument to measure that.
And then if we need more data, we can look at I-Radi, which the junior high uses, which is another tool, and Lexia, the elementary uses that. And the district already has phonological awareness screenings in place, and that's usually done with I-Radi, Fest Bridge, or Lexia, and Lexia. And the instructional literacy subcommittee will be looking at the next steps after students have been identified below grade level, so that's the district committee. So they're gonna look at, and look at what's next, and then the academic subgroup committee will look at the data by national and state and district averages to determine if students of color in our district are being over or under educated. And that is the first part. The second part is project-based learning, and so the first project-based learning cohort was created or started in September of twenty twenty-one, and cohort two will begin in January of twenty twenty-two. The platform that they use is the defined learning platform, which is like an online tool that they can go out and do research, put projects in, get materials, a list of materials and activities, and then they can bring that back to their classroom. One of the models that we're gonna use for that is the train and trainer model, so we have teachers who are in these cohorts, and then they're gonna come back into our buildings and work with the teachers in the building and help them learn how to use the defined learning platform. And then we can infuse that throughout our schools, so they can do class observations for that. We have begun at Pleasant Acres in our staff meetings, having some time where our teachers who are project-based learning trained will, are actually doing implementation and training in our staff meetings with other teachers. And lastly, the teachers in cohort one has access to up to a thousand dollars to spend on materials, and that's to support their STEAM projects, classroom, for supplies, specific projects, books, and field trips. And I think I forgot that we have a STEAM grant that Jan Ferrex wrote that kind of helps with that defer, defined learning platform, so it kind of is supporting the money for that. Any questions?
Thank you. It's a lot.
Thank you.
Disciplinary practices is me. So our subgroup met twice. The group is made up of a teacher who's also a parent, a school psychologist, and we've got a couple more coming in, another teacher, music teacher in the building, and myself. We've got another couple more that are just getting added for our next meetings. But so far, we've talked about data, a lot of data was shared within discipline for last year in terms of, you know, where are our inequities at, what are gaps between our black and brown students and their white counterparts in terms of out-of-school suspensions, expulsions, any type of disciplinary action that keeps them out of the classroom? I know that was all shared with you last year, so the first thing we said is, we don't need to keep looking at data that's gonna tell us the same thing. So we want to come with a suggestion of what are some things that we can do moving forward to help start to close those gaps? So this is what the disciplinary practices subgroup came up with. The first thing that we want to do is request an administrative committee to meet, to define the action codes in Skyward so that there's an equitable coding of the discipline-related data. There's about approximately fifty codes in Skyward right now that administrators use to, or teachers can also, or the action code, or the referral codes, there's about fifty referral codes that teachers or administrators can use to code what the offense is within the, within the classroom environment or the school environment in general. Those codes, for example, there's one called physical aggression, one called attack no weapon. These codes without clear guidance could be interchangeable, and we find that there's a lot of bias in how those codes are attached to our students based on race. So what we want to do is first convene a committee in January that will meet to sit down as a group so that we have a common definition of these codes that we're inputting to get a better use of our data. Our data will be more useful if we can have specific, if we have a very concrete example of what this looks like and who's getting assigned these types of action codes or disciplinary referral codes. We will, we would also like to create a district-wide rubric for self-evaluating disciplinary practices that would go out to teachers as well as administrators, so we'd like to create two different rubrics, one that would have, you know, best practices in how we are assigning discipline, what the outcomes of those disciplinary actions are, and how much we're keeping kids out of class based on our disciplinary actions, and we would like that to be in place every year. So once that, once we get that generated, we'd like to present it to the board as something that we could use with teachers and administrators every year so that we are truly reflecting on our practices every year when it comes to discipline and the equity within our discipline. We also suggest that more resources be made accessible and available to classroom teachers. When we talked about, there's a lot of resources in the district already, but some of the accept, the accessibility of some of those resources is not there, and when we talk about accessibility, some of it is there's not enough time in a school day for teachers to be able to unpack all of the information that they're getting at one time. Sometimes we talked about the conscious discipline book, just unpacking that whole book would take a long time for a lot of our practicing educators. So what we'd like to do is maybe create a committee moving forward that gives those pieces in small digestible bites that they're able to be modeled in practice. An example of this could be video clips of modeling best practice from conscious discipline or restorative practices or whatever it may be, and sending that out to staff on a weekly basis, and that could be done by the, on a district level, like all staff get it, or it could be not on a building basis level. We also, the last suggestion that we had from our meetings was that disciplinary practice be a standard partner, staff partner, mini-team, and team meeting, so just making sure that the, that accountability level is in there for disciplinary practices, so it's not just that here's what we should be doing, we know we're not doing it, but nothing's being done about it. So when we have that, we're talking about disciplinary practices in our mini-team meetings, our grade level meetings, our staff meetings, that it's something that they have to report out on, they have to report what their reflections on are and how they're gonna move forward in the future to change some of those outcomes for our minoritized students. Any questions on disciplinary practices?
Lot of stuff happening.
Yeah. Well, I do have one, you talked about the codes. Would it be simpler to get fewer codes or would that complicate things even more?
I think some can be, we can get rid of some codes. I think some we have to have.
The teacher's thinking about fifty codes, what, what does that fall under? I think that could be a little bit.
We started some of this last year with defiance, disruption, disrespect.
Yeah.
And that was a lot of meetings just to get through three, and we eliminated one. So it's a, I think it's a healthy practice too for those of us, for the folks in classrooms to have those conversations. Talking about defining the behavior really helps you process what you're experiencing.
I can only imagine, trying to figure out, you know, fifty codes.
Well, some of them are, you, you said, some of them are required by state code that we have to have it, and so like attack no weapon, I think is actually a state code. So fortunately, we don't, never mind. Okay. Next.
Yes.
We got it. All right.
Next subcommittee is the family and community leadership, and each building has been charged by the board to create like parent groups, and those parent groups, we, each building, junior high, elementary buildings, have been working to do reach-out meetings with the community to build parent interest. Northview, East Lawn, PA, some of them call networking at Northview, others have called it coffee visits.
We have coffee and conversation.
Coffee and conversation. Sometimes it's donuts and coffee at East Lawn, and Broad Meadow's gonna launch some more in January, and each building has done kind of a big activity with parents at the ballfield with, thank you, Andy, that was awesome, with Pleasant Acres and Broad Meadow, just really building, adding avenues for parents to be involved, and so we're really kind of at the grassroots and kind of the PTA, the pack meeting, really trying to get that back into the, to, into the schools and getting more voice and more interaction. And then also the parent, the ASOM team has been working with attendants and doing home visits and helping with vaccinations, helping, giving rides to parents to help them use the car mobile, so being, building connections where parents aren't able to have access, having a committee together where we can talk through strategically how we can give, I saw Mr. Bretherton, I think, one day going to a parent's house and like just building those connections so parents can have access to the school, and can I give you a ride? Can I introduce you to somebody? How are you feeling? How are you feeling? Wellness visits. And so connecting with attendants, connecting with principals has been really important. So again, still really grassroots, still trying to figure out a system and a process. But we're out there connecting and helping out for family and community leadership.
I'll say part of building community as a school district. We had a, Mr. Goldston, a couple of meetings ago, talked about PTAs. I think the goal for this, as we've talked about it as an admin team, is that yes, these are parent-led, it becomes parent-led. But until we have parent-led groups, we have a greater responsibility to facilitate it. And the easy example is the bilingual parent committee that we have. You know, it's a required thing that we have to do. We have to do it, right? So Patricia, four years ago, decided this, we want this to be a parent-led thing. And it took two years, I would say, of us as an admin really leading it to get to the point where the parents took over. Like at the Holiday Per the Light Parade, what was that called? December 2nd, 3rd, that parade that night? I had no idea that like this huge group of our bilingual families was just gonna show up and walk in the parade. That's the kind of stuff.
That was our Zumba class.
That was the Zumba class.
It was a Zumba class.
Yes, and they were dancing the whole way.
So we decided to dance and, yeah.
But it's that kind of stuff, it didn't happen overnight. And it took years of us working on that. And we have to keep working on it to sustain it. So the task for each of the buildings right now is to put things in place to bring the parents in and find opportunities to get them into more leadership roles. And it's gonna take some time. I just talked too much, sorry. Are we ready for the next slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one's an easy one. This committee, no, this is easier for the board. This committee is gonna be combined with the district committee that's already in existence for staff recruitment and retention. Some of the things that were talked about in the meeting was ongoing partnering with Golden Apple is being EIU. We discussed coming with more school partnerships. And I know that when we were talking, everyone who was a part of this subgroup was also a part of the district meeting. So it just made sense to combine the district or the equity subgroup with that. But to ensure that we have an equity lens that's always operating when we're talking about staff recruitment and retention on the district level.
And connecting to that is, in the, in the, the building meeting with Scott, as he talked about changing like different formats and being able to communicate how we're recruiting and how we're consciously going after minority resources that we can increase different staff, that we, the diversity of the staff. And then we just were talking with Golden Apple about, about hiring and, and, and supporting the staff that we do have and being able to help them to have a, continue to get a degree, to be able to stay in the district. Nicky was gonna.
What is Golden App? What is Golden Apple?
Well, I don't know what it technically is, but it's a non.
We can have Eden, Eden one.
Eden is a Golden Apple.
She's a Golden Apple.
Don't put her on the spot right now. Unless you're comfortable, Eden.
Yeah, um, so Golden Apple is a program that serves through college freshmen who want to be teachers all the way through practicing teachers and administrators and retired teachers and administrators. So the goal is both staff recruitment and retention through the whole state as well as recruiting college students and high school students to become teachers. So they often give out like big scholarships to young people who want to be teachers as well as people with bachelor's degrees who want to come into the teaching profession. And the goal is to send talented teachers into underserved schools and districts and especially teachers of color.
And they provide mentorship. It's really amazing to hear her stories about how, like she has a two-year mentor, they can, they talk, they have conversations. They deal with a lot of social equity and how to bring that into the, to the district and where you're at. So it's a really, it's like a wraparound service. It's great.
The biggest challenge that we have, the effort of the social equity working group is to diversify our teaching staff and administrative staff. At the same time, as a profession, especially in Illinois, there are very few people going into it, into the field at all. And I know Mr. Wilson can talk about that too, is from what he sees at the high school. It's not just a ran tool problem. It's the numbers of folks in, as undergrads, going into education has declined significantly. People are leaving the profession earlier. People are leaving the state of Illinois is another trend. So getting, just filling positions is one challenge. The other challenge is filling positions with outstanding and minority staff is the, the other piece of it. That's why we're really having to try to start to reach out with these other groups. I set you up, Mitch, you do want to say anything?
Well, I was just gonna say, within the last couple of weeks, I was on the IISA website and there was a little over 2,700 jobs available in the state of Illinois in the education system.
You didn't just say that because you were looking for a job.
But that, I mean, I'm just telling you that it's not just a ran tool thing, it's all across the state of Illinois, you know? And, and I know you went to, and I went to, up in Chicago, went to the teacher shortage seminar. And I was telling Jen, they didn't, they didn't give much benefits or much, many ideas. I was pretty underwhelmed, I should say, at least. Somebody in the crowd spoke up. And the biggest takeaway I took away from that was a guy in the crowd that, that said, when he was in college, he had to go do your student teaching, which is basically your internship. And he also had to work a job to pay for the gas money to drive to his school where he had to student teach at. But his roommate in college was a finance major and got paid $27,000 a year to do his internship. And the company gave him $3,000 to relocate to that community. And so it's like, and we don't have any connection with our professors, but yet we still gotta pay college tuition and then find a way to get to that school. So yeah, so they did not give very good pointers for us to bring back to you guys at that seminar. I will tell you that, I know.
The thing I would say, and at some point I'll be coming back to the board with more specifics on it, is we are going to have to get a lot more aggressive. And that probably means spending a lot more money than we ever have on recruitment. We, we have a teeny tiny budget for recruitment right now. And we're, in order for us to get out there and see the people and try to woo them here, it's not just salary, salary for a beginning teacher matters. And are we competitive if we're trying to bring in a mid-career teacher? You know, how do we stack up at that point? But unless we, we can't just rely on a website anymore. Or when I started, we just actually sent our resumes in. So we've got to get a lot more aggressive and that's gonna cost some money to do that. Okay, that's kind of a downer.
And that's your cultural humility. And so we've been, we've, we had a survey go out to the staff in May and we looked at that survey to develop the PD for the admin that we've been having. We three have been planning the administrative training for every, every Thursday, every other, every other Thursday. Not every Thursday, not every other Thursday. Every meet every, every week, but they meet every other Thursday.
Yeah, we meet every week. But they meet every, we meet as admins every other Thursday.
And we create a schedule, scope and sequence for each month for those Thursdays. And then even into a couple of months ahead where we talk about specific, like we've talked about implicit bias.
Implicit bias, identity, we've talked about case studies. But our last meeting we had was about analyzing equity data, which we brought in a speaker from Pennsylvania who does a lot of work with equity and analyzing equity data. And he was really informative about, you know, some of the important parts of looking at data within equity lens.
And we've had, we've had various other speakers come in and talk to the admin from like U of I, Dr. Troy from, from Milliken and talking about the different aspects of like culturally relevant teaching, you know, implicit bias, demographics of your school and how do you integrate that into the, into what you do? And so really training our first tier of this PD is working with the admin and kind of getting them supported and ready to bring that to the staff. And so now we're entering kind of the second phase of bringing it to the staff. And you are all invited to January 3rd with Dr. Sonia Whitaker. Please put that on your calendar, 8 o'clock, it's our institute day. And.
And she actually.
I don't see you all writing it down, so.
She actually.
Write that down, you're already, you're already.
I'm sure it's already there. She actually just spoke at the Illinois Association of School Boards. I don't know that any of you hear, hear her up there.
Oh, I don't know if we went to her, I didn't go to her session.
So she did have a session up there. She's a, I believe a superintendent or assistant superintendent in Dalton School District. She's been doing the work for 15 years. She does have a website, drsoniawhitaker.com. If you want to check out all of her biography and everything that she's been doing. We're excited to have her on January 3rd to kind of kick off equity for the district. You know, in talking with her and interviewing people for this, we wanted to know, you know, can you get staff members excited about equity? Because this is kind of our, their first real, you know, hit the ground, toe-dip into equity. And so we want to make sure that we present it to them in a way that gets them excited about it and gives them some actionable tools. So we're also gonna be buying some books and giving it out to our staff on that day as well.
And then using those books for our continual professional development through the rest of the year. So as we, in January 3rd, we kind of kick it off with, with staff. Now our, some of our Thursdays and our other half-days that we have will be more dedicated to the equity work. We wanted to first support the admin and being able to support it in their building. Now we're, we're starting to bring that charge and action to the, to, to, to the staff with the empowerment of the admin to help carry it and lead it. And so we're continuing equity PD with admin and then adding coaches and adding staff so that we're all saying the same thing. And it's more of a framework, it's more of a way of looking at what we do and our practices instead of like, oh, I, I read a book, I got it, I'm done. It's more like how do we, how do we infuse it into everything? And so January 3rd, we're, they've already sent it out, the admin, many of the admin do the implicit association test with the staff, being able just to start that reflection process, creating a document to model language that will move from deficit mindset to equity mindset. So really, so like what things can we say instead of, right? How can we change our language?
Instead of minority underrepresented.
And then developing equity survey to guide future PDs. So we're working on that for January 3rd as well. Staff during the afternoon would take in the survey and then we would look at the survey from the staff. And, and we want, we were talking also, Nicky, you have something out to the community. We're first starting with the staff, student, we want to get to the students in the community so that we can create PD that is relevant for, for everyone that we're working with. And then you, the book study and providing schools with a framework so that we're all kind of moving in a similar direction. Even though buildings are different, you can have a framework that allows you the flexibility to adjust to where your building's at. Cause each building is at a different place with equity than, you know, like Northview's in a different place than Broad Metal, a different place than Easton, different. And so to lock buildings into one thing is not taking into account the culture of the building. So we want to be careful of being sensitive to, to each building and their needs, but still pressing everyone to move forward.
Right.
And so, Coach, anything else you want to say?
No, I think you said I don't.
Okay.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you guys for all your help.
I have a question for you.
Questions, alright, questions.
On the 24th, is your formal meeting? Location, time?
Ader, Ader, junior high.
So that way the people listening know.
Yeah, and this is, it's sent out somewhere else too, right? It's in a, it's from 6:00 to 7:30. In the light, or the IAC, the Innovation Center, we're at Ader. It will, there is also a Zoom link attached to it as well. So we'll, we send out the Zoom link with the meeting invite. We'll send it out to all district admin or district employees so that we know where it's at.
And community as well. Maybe we can do kind of.
Maybe we can post it.
Post it on Facebook, also do like maybe.
And the 3rd also here at Ader?
January 3rd is at JW Ader and it'll be in the main gym as the keynote speaker. And that will be from 8:30 to 9:30.
That'll get everybody listening to here.
Well, that is not open to the public.
It's open to you.
It's open to the board and, and the community members who are on the, in the group, in the community right now. Yeah, cause we, we do have to limit that for space, so. I mean, not that thousands of people are gonna show up. I don't know, you know? And if someone in the audience really wants to go, just talk to us, we can probably figure it out.
But definitely please.
Alright.
Contrary to what the superintendents that mean, press that all this.
I just meant the recruitment part, alright.
But, thank you. Sometimes I hear people, well, you use teachers, don't, you know, what time and effort that you guys put into this, and everybody. And then here, it's the day before the end of school and you're here this night, you know? Your willingness to do things. It really encourages me that, that things are gonna change. Now it's gonna take, you know, but I, I just feel, I just feel better, so thank you.
And Patricia, I don't know if it's just you or if you're bringing the whole group, but she's coming Saturday morning.
Yep.
7 o'clock.
This is my crew right here. Annie, Annie, right there. What you're talking about, what you're talking about.
Yeah, they're gonna be out there.
We're gonna make, we're gonna make ornament.
Start helping that community in there.
Thank you guys. One thing I'd like to point out for the board is, for me, this is an example, I, I call it promises made, promises kept. Last year's board you made, not all of you, weren't all on this board, but the board approved specific actions. And the reason for this presentation is to show how we are continuing to follow up and act on basically those mandates that we got from the board. We want to make sure that we're doing what the board expects us to be doing. Alright.
Okay. Item number 17 is some, first reading of some board policies. Do you want to say that?
I do, yes. There has been so much new legislation coming out of Springfield right now that I believe it's 160 pages of new board policy updates that have to go in. Most of them are just reflective of changes in the law. So we always call it a first reading where all of these policy updates are in your packet. There are four policies updated to note in here, which I have on the screen. I am not asking in January for the board to approve item number one, which is in Policy 660, which is regarding comprehensive sex education. At this time, Jenny Ferrex and Lindsay Rubach are working with our teachers who teach health at the junior high and our elementary teachers about what this means. This got picked up quite a bit in the media because some of the content in the new curriculum has made the news, I'll just say it that way. That's a good way for me to be neutral on it. So we want to make sure we are coming to the board knowing what we're gonna do with the sex ed law. And the state of Illinois still hasn't provided the guidance yet. So they passed the law that established they have to give us guidance and we don't have that yet and this is supposed to go into effect next school year, okay? So we're not gonna move forward on the sex ed. Colon 6135, I'm recommending we remove item number four, which has to do with course acceleration because we do not have a high school. So I did consult with another K-8 district and that component is being taken out because we don't have a high school. We do have kids, we have cases where if we have a seventh or eighth grader who's capable of taking a high school class, we do work with our THS to try to set that up. We have not had one. We had one, we were gonna do it with this year, but the, the parent chose not to. But, so we will do it when we, we can, it's just we're not going to put it in policy to require it. Policy 7160 is some new laws on dress code. And it's probably made more news as far as school athletic uniforms. But I will put into it further recommendation that we would expand ours to acknowledge race, ethnicity and hair texture within the policy. I think it is, well, I would like all districts to probably put it in, but it definitely would be, looking at our students is something we need to make sure we're including. So we're, it would be basically not discriminating against a child because of their hair texture or their race or ethnicity and that goes with clothing. So I know this year, and Mitch may have seen, started seeing it at track meets and cross-country meets, but a lot of this is, for instance, sports, the, you used to, if you didn't wear the uniform, couldn't participate. Well, depending on religion and maybe culture, I saw a lot of hijabs, which are the head wraps at cross-country meets this fall. I'd never seen that before. Modesty is an issue that is acknowledged in the law. So the short, short shorts that are worn in volleyball are not required all the time. If the girl's not comfortable doing that now, those, those kinds of things. And we will affirm that's in our policy that cell phones are required to be kept out of sight. So that's just a change in the discipline policy. We have to make a decision, are cell phones out of sight or, or what? And our current practice is, the expectation is cell phones are out of sight, so we would just be continuing that. So that's really boring stuff, but anything on the board policy? I'm sure you all read it.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
That first one, we heard a lady, I don't remember what month it was, talk about that bill that's coming out. And I think she had either asked or, or made mention of some kind of waiver to wherever elementary's-
That was communication with us, yeah.
Be, would be excluded from that. Is that something that's being-
That's what we have to determine. Currently, yes, you can anyway. You can opt out of health curriculum. It's, we really don't hit anything related to sex ed directly, that we would all in our brains think about sex ed until seventh grade, and that's pretty standard, sixth, seventh grade is when it comes in. We do, we follow something called Aaron's Law in, in all of our grades, and that is about, uh, I'm gonna, it's about appropriate touching. So that's a kind of an anti-molestation law, and so we're doing that already. And there's already notification that goes out to parents on that, that they can opt out of it. But I, I think it's gonna be some decisions that we're gonna have to make as far as what we want that to look like. I've shared with Andy that, you know, my concern is, the way I'm understanding law right now is that if we have sex ed, we must follow this new curriculum. I don't want us to lose sex ed altogether because of parts of the curriculum that are gonna possibly be strongly objectionable. So how do we find that middle ground? Now, the board could say, we're just gonna adopt it all and be fine with it. I, I'm just expecting you're not, but we'll see. And so we've gotta come up with that. But there would, there already is opt-out language in our policy regarding curriculum. That was a long answer to your question.
Anybody else have any further questions on the policy? Okay, do we have, Prudence will just go on you this round?
Yeah, we're gonna, we don't have to prevent it yet, and there's no additional public comments.
Information items?
Information items, oh, we have three, three FOIAs this month. Again, I post the FOIAs app in the board packet, the responses for the FOIAs, if anyone wants to check those.
FOIA number three.
Yes.
Looks like it may have got downloaded incorrectly.
Drive the wrong date on it. I can check it.
It's a hundred and seventy-six page document.
Yes.
It looks like that's-
Yes.
That's what they asked for?
Yes.
Okay.
That, and that's just data on purchasing records. It's a recurring one, right?
I, well, I didn't see a, I didn't see a letter. Normally, the other ones have a letter.
Yeah, that one, we just upload the documents to that location.
Yeah, and this, the dates of that is, uh, I, I, I think it's November through current shape.
Yep.
And so there's a lot of activity.
Yep. Basically, my understanding is these are companies that collect all the data and try and determine pricing type things.
Gotcha.
All right, other information items, hopefully you read through it all, but we are working with the high school district on a community partnership grant that involves multiple other agencies. And that's to provide primarily mental health supports and other supports in the community. That's a COVID-related grant. There's a bunch of curriculum and instruction updates that I wanted the board to be aware, and also for the public, kind of where we are on some of our curriculum projects. The annual report, board members, this document is there in front of you. This is the, the most relevant parts of the annual report. Last year I presented it in November, this year I'll be presenting it in January. I would like to ask that between now and January, you make sure to look through it. And if you have, I plan to present it in January, but if the board wants to give me more direction, I can, I can either do a very general presentation of the whole annual report, which is appropriate, or you could all ask me to focus on specific pieces of the annual report as, as you, once you've looked through, okay? There is not updated academic data. The academic data is very questionable. It's all on our school report card on the website right now. But we just learned today, for instance, from ISB, they're not doing the summative designations this year. They are adjusting the scoring scales, there's just, there's so much inconsistency in the data statewide as a result of COVID. So for instance, we only had, I think, sixty-seven percent of our students take the state assessment last year. Normally, it's ninety-nine percent, okay? So it's just the data's all over the place on that, so that's not in there. But a lot of the financial information, the information on staffing, all of that's ready to roll, and it's in there. We shared this at the last meeting, we had, we won a STEAM grant. We didn't know we were one of eight districts in the whole state to win it. Thank you again, Jenny Frericks, grant writer, extraordinary, but that's ninety-four thousand dollars. And as the social equity working group said, that's, uh, most of that is going to support our problem-based learning, project-based learning program that we're working on building in the pilot groups. COVID data is, last month, I said, our COVID data's good, but if I was including this week- And then now, this month, I'm including that week, and I did the numbers on our staff in the last four weeks. Twenty-seven percent of our unvaccinated staff have been COVID positive. That's a lot of employees out for work. We have fifty, about fifty unvaccinated staff members, so fourteen cases in the last four weeks. Eight weeks before that, we had one staff case of those unvaccinated employees. We are also starting to see the breakthrough cases that you're hearing about. So staff members who are fully vaccinated and have boosters are coming out with symptoms and testing positive. I've been communicating with the board that when are we gonna close a school? When are we gonna go, close a classroom? We have several classrooms in the district closed right now, mostly at the early grades, so pre-K. Can't remember the grade I closed today. And they're in different schools. Last, two weeks ago, one of our elementary schools had thirty-five percent of the students out. So we were, I was ready to close that school. And then as we went through it, a very large number of kids were coming back from quarantine the next day. So we didn't end up closing it. We're sitting at about an eighty-five percent attendance rate at the moment. A typical year, we'd be ninety-two, ninety-five. But when we have dips going down into, it was Broadmeadow was down at sixty-five percent attendance. That's concerning, and, and we will pull the plug, so to speak, on having to come to school in person by building and by grade level. And, and so we will, we'll do that if we need to. But hopefully winter break and the littles increasingly getting vaccinated will help us calm this. I also shared that the Dr. Ezek, I forget what her title is, but she's in charge of the Department of, Illinois Department of Public Health, is planning to recommend some changes to how close contacts are handled in schools, which, again, I hope means we have more tests to stay, option instead of having to exclude kids who are, for no fault of their own, sitting next to someone who is diagnosed with COVID. So that's the hope on that one. Is there anything else? Media, I had a couple, we had two News Gazette articles this week, kind of interesting, so those are in your packet. Two, and board superintendent comments? Dang it, it went to, I thought we'd be an hour to that. All right.
Any board members have any comments or anything they'd like to share with the group?
It's personal, thank you very much.
This is Garth. Well, I would like to take an opportunity to wish all of you here on the board a happy holiday season, and staff, make sure you tell all them.
Well, what are we doing tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, passing out some, some of the checks that we've passed.
Yes, we're gonna take a walk and visit all the schools tomorrow, so.
But make sure you pass along in your season greetings to the staff, to the board, and wish everybody a happy holiday season as well.
If any other board members wanna come with, eight o'clock tomorrow morning, Andy and I are setting out to Ader first, and then we'll visit all the schools. And we have an envelope for them this year, so thank you. We're darn excited. Just tell them drive the drivers.
Just tell them to drive around the block. But, okay, if there's nothing else, can we get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Mr. Tyler Wilson and Ms. Pettit.
You get that?
Todd Brothers?
Hi.
Phil Johnson?
Hi.
Nikki Pettit?
Hi.
Ms. Wilson?
Hi.
Tyler Wilson?
Hi.
Andy Graham?
Hi.
It could have been shorter. My, turn off the cameras.
Hi.